It's 5 o'clock and I'm calling this meeting to order. We're going to begin with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Kristy Christie. Face the flag. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'm looking to see if there are any elected officials. If you are there and I have not spotted you, please let me know. All right, seen none. I want to remind everybody this evening that this is a convened called meeting to consider the superintendent's evaluation and contract. Once we have finished that business, we will adjourn this meeting, take a very short break, and convene for our quarterly workshop. Also, since our 2019-20 school year officially starts on Monday, on behalf of the entire board, I want to welcome our teachers and other staff back to school. Our students will report to school on Monday, August 5th, and we look forward to a great year for our students, our families, our employees, and our community. I know several of us have already been in some of our schools, welcoming our teachers and staffs back, and so far, it seems to be a very, very good start of year. So, we're praying and hoping and optimistic that it will continue that way throughout this year. Looking at the agenda, are there any requested changes to this agenda? Seen none, I'll move forward. Do I hear approval to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Norman, second by Horn. All in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Cottney?
Item five, approve superintendent's annual evaluation.
All right, and that is the business that we are here, and we are going into formal discussion about the evaluation process. I'd like to say, before we get into a little more discussion here, just about the evaluation that we completed and the process that we went through. Recognizing that we have a superintendent's committee that worked very hard on rewriting an evaluation, on trying to update an evaluation that had been in place for several years. There was a lot of effort made to try to make it more relevant, to tie it to, in fact, some components also, that our teachers are evaluated by, trying to make it a level playing field. If our teachers and our principals are evaluated by certain numbers and test results, then certainly that should flow up the food chain, so to speak, and also end with our superintendent, our director of schools. Recognizing that this was a transition year for us, I will be first to state that we had a few bumps in the process and that some of the things that we were trying to use in our metrics were not available. That's nobody's fault. It just, much of it has to do with the timing that we're under as we worked on this evaluation. For benefit of our new board members and for a review for our old board members, I've asked our attorney, who is Mr. Sanders tonight, stepping in for Mr. Dubler, to just give a very brief explanation about why we do this evaluation, when it is to be done, and what the statute, as well as the Tennessee State Department of Education guidelines are as far as the board's duty and responsibility in performing an evaluation. So, Mr. Sanders, I'll turn this to you, please.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. As you imply, the board is covered by several different obligations legally regarding the evaluation and the formation of any potential extension of the superintendent's contract. Starting with the most important, our state law, the Tennessee Code in particular, without reciting all the chapter and verse of it, the state law regarding evaluation obligates the board every year to develop and implement an evaluation plan to be used annually, every year, that is, every year for the director of schools. And it mandates that the form of the evaluation shall include sections regarding the job performance, student achievement, relationships with staff and personnel, relationships with board members, and relationships with community. Mr. Dubler has already contacted you all and opined that the form of your evaluation did comport with Tennessee law in that regard. Furthermore, Tennessee statute discusses how the, when the evaluation should be, or when the contracting should be done, if there is to be a contract made. And it states that it should not be done essentially around the time of an election. Now, that's not applicable in this particular year because we are outside of a board election. But in years when there is a board election, it's not to be done 45 days before a general board election or 30 days after. So, for instance, if there were a board election on August 1st, that would mean there could be no contract made from between June 15th and September 1st. There also is a notice requirement, which this board has complied with, that no school board should extend the contract of the director of schools without giving notice of the intent to do so at least 15 calendar days prior to the scheduled meeting. Now, that again is all pursuant to state statute. Additionally, you have requirements of your own board policies, in this case, C-125. That provides guidance on how the evaluation is to take place, but not the specifics. Finally, I should remind the board that you're obligated under your own contract with Mr. Thomas, and that pursuant to that, terms of that contract, you obligated yourselves that you shall conduct an evaluation yearly, beginning in 2018, and those evaluations shall take place in July or as soon thereafter as practicable. And the evaluation protocol shall be pursuant to the Tennessee regulations and board policy. And they shall be reasonably related to the director's duties and goals and objectives for the year in question.
Thank you. Thus, the explanation on the timing, why it varies from year to year, and why at some point, we may not have all the data in that we might like to have. This being a transition year, I do believe that next year, it will be, reflect more accurately the prior year's progress. Having said that, I do feel confident, though, that the evaluation that we used this year for our superintendent with the information that we had in place was as accurate as could possibly be attested to. And for that, I'm very grateful for our committee that worked on this new evaluation. I know that it was a lot of hard work. All right, having said that, I will open the floor to any discussion on our superintendent's evaluation. Ms. Owen?
I just want to see if Mr. McPherson wanted to talk about how the totals were arrived at.
Thank you, Madam. This is on, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so what, obviously, in the instrument itself, there were some areas that some board members felt comfortable in scoring based on information that they felt they had sufficient information to it. Some areas, they weren't. And so, what we did is we took every score and just included every score. And we just did a standard average, a total number of points scored, and divided that by the number of categories scored. So, it was just a simple average, if you will. What made it problematic is it was very difficult to try to score category by category and then average those scores together, because you may have one category where half the board scored it, or another category, and the other half didn't. So, then you would be putting some undue weight on a particular category when other board members maybe didn't score. So, what we did is we just took every score, counted every score, didn't throw out any scores, and just did it by the total number of categories scored, if that makes sense. It's total number of points divided by the total number of categories, and that's what we arrived at.
So, if we were to go through and look at the areas that we did not have data available for this year, and if the board chose to throw out those items tonight, would we be able to have a new score tonight, quickly, during, you see what I'm saying?
I'm not sure.
If we go through, since you used total, total score, if we choose to throw out some of those questions that do not have data available, like 10 ready data?
Okay.
Is that something that we can re-score?
So, in other words, on those, I'll make sure I understand your question, so on those items or categories where maybe some board member scored and some didn't, just regardless, throw that out? Throw that whole category out? Yeah, I suppose we would. I'd probably need a 10 key to do that. Yeah, we, I mean, there's a couple of different ways we could look at it. We just didn't want to, you know, unilaterally throw a board member's score out just because another board member maybe didn't score. So, we wanted to just give equal weight to every score.
Right. I think that's the way you had to do it, because we had not voted to make any of these not applicable. So, I think technically, we need to vote to make items not applicable, as we did last year, if we want to take them out, or if we want them to not be scored. For example, the 10 ready, do we want that as part of the evaluation, even though we don't have that data? So, do we leave them all there as they are, or do we remove those scores? And where we get into a tricky point here is that if we do that, we're doing what the state does with 10 ready. We're making cut scores after the fact. And even though they, it's my, from what I've looked at, it wouldn't make a difference in the overall score. Kind of tricky to whether to do that or not. So, I think we might want to talk a little bit about what we want to do about that.
All right. Are you making that in the form of a motion?
No, just a discussion topic.
Discussion, all right, thank you, thank you. Ms. Bab?
I guess I have a discussion around that, and I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with what she's asking, but this year, we did not have the 10 ready data. Was this an anomaly, or do we think every year for this year, we will not have it when we're doing this evaluation?
Mr. Thomas, would you like to address that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Bab. My understanding is from our REA folks that we would have the same issue every year with the timing of the information that's being asked for, because it's just not available until August. And with the evaluation being submitted before that, then we just wouldn't have it, so...
So, and I don't know how to handle this, and I don't know how to handle it with Ms. Owen. Basically, we're basically saying, one-sixth of the evaluation, we will never have the data in the way that we're saying we want it. However, there is data. It just, you're looking at it 10 months' old data. That's the only way you can look at it, if that's the only thing we have. This is probably a discussion for a whole nother thing, because it's not around today's discussion, but it does kind of bring up what you're talking about. If you're talking about it this year, you're talking about trying to throw out this data every single year, and if that's the case, why is it part of the evaluation?
May I answer that, Madam Chair?
Please.
Our committee and other folks that we talked to felt very strongly that, since our teachers are evaluated using 10 ready, that it needed to be part of our superintendent's evaluation. We, as a board, need to realize that this is what our teachers and our principals go through every single year. Every single year, they are told that they will have these scores and that this is how they will be evaluated, and every single year, they don't. And if we throw it out for our superintendent, we need to find a way to throw it out for our teachers. I don't think it's fair for us to say that the state is going to have us score our teachers based on 10 ready, and for us to not use it for our superintendent's evaluation. I think that it's, I don't think that's very respectful of our teachers. So, we need to realize how difficult this was for us, and either advocate to change this at the state level, come up with our own system, and present it to the state, or we need to continue scoring with an unreliable system that our state requires of our teachers.
All right, are there any other comments? Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree in principle with Ms. Owens. Certainly, I've been one of the most outspoken people around here about teacher evaluation and what I think is just, it borders on shame, the way the system is, the way it works. I think it's a, it's just, it does not represent, we're not able to represent really what good teaching is with this system. Mathematically, I think it's severely flawed. But, that's really a separate question to me. So, we cannot, based on the scores that we have, we cannot evaluate the superintendent based on the student achievement component. And so, it would just be my recommendation for us just to go forward, do the best we can with what we got. That's it.
All right, any other comments, questions? I, too, hear, Ms. Owen, what you say, and it is, it is a very, it is a very valid problem that we face. One thing I am encouraged about, perhaps, is that, assuming everything stays the same, and by that, I mean, Mr. Thomas is sitting here next year, this time, just like he is this year, then we will at least have some scores from the prior year that are valid under his watch, if nothing else, which will at least offer some measure to start the process with. Ms. Owen?
I would just make the recommendation that in the future, that we really look at the recommendations that came from the committee, and prior to the evaluation, have the Office of Research and Human Resources talk to us about what measures we could reliably use and which we could not, so that as a board, we would have that on the front end, and we wouldn't have to individually be deciding whether to have each of those questions scored or not. So, if we could have that meeting prior to having the evaluation and prior to having our individual meetings, I think that would be very valuable, so that we could have that discussion about what data we could reliably and validly use.
I agree, and Ms. Bab?
I guess that was a little bit of my problem this year, and this has nothing to do with actually, Mr., your evaluation, but it was what data was available, because there is some data available. We have things like graduation rates. We have certain data that is very important to us, yet none of that data was involved in this. And yet, we talk about data being important. So, I do think there is data showing how well or not well our system is doing, and I do think we need to find out what data is available to be used and try to incorporate that, so that we, I feel, have a little bit more valid data-driven evaluation. I mean, I feel like we had a good evaluation model, but my problem was with, the data questions were all about data that was not available to us.
I concur, Ms. Bab and Ms. Owen both, and what I might ask Ms. Cottney to do is take note of this, and in September, perhaps, at our board retreat, we might want to discuss the original evaluation committee coming together, or appoint a new committee, whatever the board's desire is, to relook at this. It may be wise at that time to pull in some of our R&amp;D folks and find out exactly what the timing looks like. So, again, this time next year, we can avoid some of this, anyway. For now, though, and for today, as Mr. Norman said, it's just the process that we are in, and I do feel it's very important that we move forward with this discussion, and also we need to make a recommendation on our superintendent's contract. Now, if there's no more discussion on the evaluation, and I'm seeing no lights, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion that we approve the amendment to the current employment contract with Superintendent Bob Thomas to include a one-year extension, also a 4% salary increase for fiscal year 2020. And I believe there's also a... Oh, I apologize, I apologize. There is a motion on the floor. Forgive me. Backing up. Yes, please.
The motion was to approve the superintendent's annual evaluation. Mr. Norman made the motion, and Ms. Horn seconded that.
Thank you. Procedurally, I apologize. All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, I will move forward, then, to the motion on the contract. As I understand it, we have, Mr. Sanders, there is one more year left on the current contract in place. Is that correct?
That is correct. I believe that this board, last year, approved an extension through May of 2020, and therefore, there's one year left at this time.
All right, thank you. My motion, then, is to amend the current employment contract with Superintendent Bob Thomas to include a one-year extension and a 4% salary increase for fiscal year 2020. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I can interrupt, that is not quite precisely the words of the, of the contract.
Okay, this, I believe, is what was passed on by Mr. Dubler, but if I need to revise that, please advise.
If I could suggest that you simply...
Please do.
You simply, simply asked for a motion to approve the amended contract, would might be a better way to proceed, because the amended contract has an escalatory clause to give a raise in both fiscal years 2020 and 2021.
All right, to be appropriate, ask for an amendment to approve the extension of the current employment contract? Is that correct, Mr. Sanders?
I believe so. If you'd asked someone to give that amendment.
All right, Ms. Cottney, if you could read that, please.
Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
So, item six is approve amendment to current employment contract with Superintendent Bob Thomas to include a one-year extension and a 4% salary increase for fiscal year 2020.
And my suggested amendment is, Madam Chair, that you approve the proposed amended contract to, of employment as set forth on the board's, on the backup of the board's agenda, which includes a proposed 4% in salary increase in both fiscal years 2020 and fiscal year 2021, as pursuant to paragraph four, and there are also additional terms of changes from the original contract.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and the board has received a copy of those recommended changes. So, what he said is my motion.
And that's my second.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. All right, is there any discussion?
So, it would take it through May of '21, is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, is there any discussion? All right. I see some discussion over here.
Madam Chair, I apologize again. It's April, the concluding date will be April 6th of 2021. Again, I defer to the document as written. If we just, if the board simply approves the document as written, I think that'll solve the problems.
All right, and also approve the document as is written. All right. There is a, we have a motion, we have a second. Are we good with that, Mr. Sanders?
As long as you have a motion and a second from members of the board, as opposed to me, yes, Madam Chair.
All right, I made the motion, I heard Mr. Norman second that. Is there any discussion? All right. Ms. Cottney, if you'd take a roll call vote on that, please.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
That's nine to zero, and the motion passes.
All right, Mr. Superintendent, we're very hopeful that you will accept this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I certainly look forward to serving, continuing to serve our students, our parents, our board, our community, so I just thank you for the confidence. I think we're going to work hard to make progress and make sure that we provide those very best educational opportunities we can for every student, all students. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, you're much appreciated. Is there any one signed up for public forum in this called meeting?
No, ma'am, no one has signed up for public forums for this meeting.
All right, that said, this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at 5:35. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to our quarterly workshop. We're going to begin this with a moment of silence and the pledge by Kristy Christie.
Face the flag. Pledge... A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcements were made in our brief meeting beforehand. Do I see any changes to the agenda? Motion to approve is presented?
So moved.
Motion by Norman, second by Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a few brief announcements since we last met. First of all, I'm very pleased to introduce you to our new Chief of Staff, Mr. Renee Kelly. Ms. Kelly returns to Knox County Schools from Emerald Academy, where she served as the school director. Ms. Kelly joined Knox County Schools in 1999 as a teacher at Bearden Middle School, later worked for Project Grad. She began her career in administration in 2009, when she was appointed Assistant Principal at Spring Hill Elementary School. She was a Leadership Academy Fellow in 2010 and placed at Bearden Middle School as an Assistant Principal. She also served as Assistant Principal and Principal at West Valley Middle School. Ms. Kelly holds a bachelor's degree in business administration and marketing and a master's degree in elementary education, both from the University of Tennessee. She also holds an educational specialist degree in administration and supervision from Lincoln Memorial University. So we're just so glad to have Renee join our team and started on Monday of this week and is really doing a great job. So thank you, Renee. I want to remind everyone that the sixth and ninth grade orientations are tomorrow. That's Thursday, August 1st, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Career Magnet Academy and L and N STEM orientations will be one hour later, from 9:30 to 1:00. Buses will be running their scheduled routes. If you have any additional questions regarding orientation, please contact your child's school. The Knox County Schools Teacher Supply Depot will open this Saturday, August 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The depot's located on the Cedar Bluff campus. All Knox County Schools' teachers and teaching assistants are invited to shop for free classroom supplies. We welcome many new faces to our school district during last week's New Teacher Academy. Our teachers, administrators, and school employees have been working hard in their buildings this week, and we're ready to provide a warm welcome for our students next week. And when I say next week, by the way, students will return to school on Monday, August 5th, for a half a day. Also on Monday, Mayor Jacobs will host his school mania from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Jacobs Building in Chilhawley Park. It's a free event and open to the public. I think I speak for the entire district when I say how excited we are to start a new school year. With that in mind, I wanted to share some positive news that should inspire us all. I recently received updated numbers about the class of 2019, which graduated in the spring. The latest numbers show that our graduation rate for 2019 was 20... I mean, 90.4%, which is an increase of 5/10ths of a percent compared to the previous year. So again, we're back to a little above 90% with the graduation rate, which is great, and that was for over 4,000 seniors that graduated last spring. In addition, the percentage of ready graduates rose to 49%, an increase of 5% compared to the previous year. And we also saw strong gains in the number of AP courses, industry certifications, and dual credit courses that were completed. So the seniors that graduated through their four years increased those numbers over the class of 2018. So these are great accomplishments, and they're a testament to the hard work of our students and the dedication of our teachers, principals, and school employees. I'm proud to recognize them, and I know we will continue to achieve even better results next year. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments from Mr. Thomas? Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask you a brief question, and I don't know whether you would be the one to answer it or whether a staff member, because it's such a new move, but it's my understanding that Dr. Bartlett chose to go to Farragut as the principal down there, and there were some... The notice we saw, there were some extended duties. Would somebody comment on what those duties are?
Yes, sir. We'd like to talk about that a little bit, and also that any of our other staff members, Dr. Reiswick, Mr. Bolton, Mr. McPherson, can jump in and help me out if I leave out anything. And let me say about Dr. Bartlett, he has an exceptional ability to develop relationships with students, staff, and did a great job at Bearden High School for 10 years, and his work this past year at the central office, he did an outstanding job, you know, with us in the central office, too. But he actually missed working, I think, with students and teachers and asked to go back. But he also provided some very valuable leadership in the central office. So we tried to look at a way to capture both in order to make him more satisfied with what he's doing, working with teachers and students, and then also to help us in our efforts to try to work and develop leaders of the future. So it's not really unprecedented. Becky Ash, of course, retired. She was principal at L and N STEM Academy, and Becky served in a dual capacity, too. She was principal of L and N STEM and then also worked with Director of the STEM Hub. And of course, L and N STEM Academy had 100% graduate... Graduation rate, I think, last two years, and the highest ACT scores in the district. So not saying Dr. Bartlett will do that, but just know that it's possible to balance that. But with Dr. Bartlett, we had talked with him about working with our aspiring principals program. Also, as the board... What we're kicking off next year is in the fall... In January, second semester, is a program for teachers who wish to get into school leadership, school administrative positions. And Dr. Bartlett, in his role at Bearden High School, mentored many of our folks who are now principals. He does a tremendous job of mentoring folks. So we decided that we wanted to try to capitalize on that ability as well as his ability as a principal. In our original plan, we had for some retirees to come and lead seminars. Some of that's not worked out quite as well as we hoped, so Dr. Bartlett can step in and help us there. He also leads a leadership program at Liberty College, I believe, and he can step in and do some mentoring after work hours and then help us with seminars, and possibly even mentoring three to four individuals each month. And again, as I said, he's mentored principals in the past. So we just felt like this was the most effective way to utilize Dr. Bartlett's abilities. And we... And I say effective, efficiency entered into it, too. We're getting this all for $3,500 from Dr. Bartlett, if you looked at his principal salary, and which would be with doing this for us, a cost of $3,500. It's really kind of budget neutral from a standpoint. His position was already in the budget. So we feel like we're really maximizing Dr. Bartlett's abilities. He's going to help us be a tremendous principal at Farragut High School, and he's also going to help us in a tremendous way developing our leaders of the future. So...
Just one follow-up on that?
Yes, sir.
So most of this, other than if he were mentoring somebody and he wanted them to follow him around, or they chose to follow him around during the course of the day?
That would be part of it, but also mentoring folks that are not really at his building, too.
Okay. But that... That's what I was getting at. Most all of it would be done outside of the... Particularly with teachers, unless they were, you know, following him around on a given day. It would have to be done after normal school hours.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Seeing no other lights, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six. This is dealing with the U.S. Census Report, and we have an audience, I believe, Ms. Kimberly Smith. She's with the part... She is a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. Welcome, Ms. Smith, and we would appreciate your comments.
Thank you all. Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here today. I will try and keep my time brief. I don't want to have us here all evening, but I could talk census all evening long. This is something I'm personally heavily passionate about, and this is the county that I actually reside in, so I really want to make sure that we can do our part locally to get the message out about the census. And one of the best ways to do so is through our school system. So today I want to talk to you all about some of the tools that we can provide our educational leaders to help us get that message to the community about the upcoming 2020 census. So we're going to talk about statistics in schools, what that is, why it's important to have it as a toolset for our educational leaders, and how it's enhancing education today, the benefits of using our SIS program, where it can be accessed, and then how it can help contribute a successful... Contribute to a successful 2020 census in Knox County. So Statistics in School is a free program that was developed in collaboration with educational leaders. It's provided by the Census Bureau, again, to no cost to our educational partners. It provides data, tools, and teacher-friendly activities in statistics, history, mathematics, and sociology. This free program helps our students understand how to access data from a true and reputable source. It encourages them to use them both in and out of the classrooms, and it provides an opportunity to supplement and enhance the lesson plans that are already in the classrooms. So what I want to do is if it works, if not, we can improvise, but if we can look at this video from where other teachers and other principals are talking about how Statistics in Schools is improving their education. Is there a way to click on that? How do I? Tech people? Did I? Maybe. I'm going to keep clicking over. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'm not tech savvy at all. While this is loading, I will let you know I am working in overseeing 34 counties. Is there sound?
Yes, it is. Whenever you're ready, it will start again.
Go ahead, start it.
Statistics in Schools can be used as a resource just by the fact that it's something different in the classroom, so it will captivate student interest. So I really believe that Statistics in Schools is a valuable resource for really almost any educator, certainly for math, for history, for geography, teachers.
Ms. Smith, I'm so sorry, the sound's not going to work because the mic is not embedded into the computer there. So I will make sure that the board members get the link to this YouTube video, if that's okay. That would be great. So basically, what it does is just showcasing what Statistics in Schools has done for their classrooms already. It lets you see from a in-classroom, real-time viewpoint on what the Census in Schools program does, how easy it is to use, and how teachers and principals are seeing great reviews from it. I'm overseeing 34 counties in East Tennessee. We have a couple of partners that have come on board, Mike Clones, who are wonderful people, which allow me to focus locally around Knox County. We've done another SIS presentation in Monroe County, and they have just picked this up with speed, and they're integrating it throughout their efforts to help us with Statistics in Schools. So I'll just show you briefly how to access that Statistics in Schools program, and all of our material is public accessible. Our website here lists all of the activities by grade level and classroom. And in addition, we provide resources that can supplement those activities, as well as current lesson plans. Scrolling down through that site, you'll see, again, those activities are accessible by classroom. And if you click on any one of them, it'll pull up all of the activities we've predeveloped, and then they're conveniently arranged by grade level. Clicking on one of them, it'll pull up more specific information about that activity. And then at the bottom, it allows you to click on downloadable versions for both the teacher and the students. So again, we're not trying to burden our educational leaders by reinventing the will or creating another lesson plan, but we have it ready and available for them. And some of the, again, the really cool ways of using these materials, it allows students to understand data, how to look at statistics. And that's something that, you know, we're not going to be able to evade as they grow up and graduate within our workforce. One of the statistics we found is that by the time kindergarteners graduate, jobs in statistics-related fields will have grown by thirty-three percent. That's huge. And being able to say, from the time that they're in kindergarten, being exposed to Statistics in Schools, provides them an opportunity to be more well-rounded in that aspect. So again, some of the ways that the SIS program, implementing that in the school systems, can help us with the 2020 census, it provides the opportunity for our teachers, our local trusted voices, the people that we leave our children with all day long, to be able to educate our kids on the importance of the census, the impact it has not only for the schools but our communities. And again, that's coming from somebody that they trust. Also, it allows them to understand about civic responsibility, so that when they graduate, it'll be their responsibility to complete the census. And again, we're encouraging people from the start to understand the what and the why of the census. So this is the roadmap for the 2020 census in schools. What we would like to see now is our educational leaders going online before school starts, getting comfortable with our website, seeing what tools that they can use to enhance the work that they're already doing. I know in September, we have Freedom Week and Constitution Day, which mandates that we teach the students about what the Constitution offers for our country. Well, what better way to integrate 2020 census than Constitution Day? Again, that's an easy way you can pull from our site to talk about the census and what it provides. And then throughout the year, providing other opportunities to discuss 2020 census and its impact locally. And then in March of 2020, we have our Statistics in Schools Week, where we ask our educational partners across the country to provide lesson plan opportunities about the census, using census to enhance the lessons in history and math. So that, again, it's a discussion topic, not just in the classroom, but during homework time with parents. And that's actually working in coordination with our national operations, where we start sending letters out to the households to complete the 2020 census. So we try to mirror our efforts from operations to those that are being put into the community by our educational partners. And then, of course, you know, helping us get the message out that April 1, although it is April Fool's Day, is actually Census Day, so that our families can feel a part of a community when our teachers are asking them to help complete the census, when their employment situations are asking them to fill out the census, when their local faith-based communities are also saying the same messaging, that we have a truly well-rounded community behind our census efforts. So I will leave the floor for questions now.
Dr. Ryswick, have you been able to get any of this material to our math supervisor or Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. We probably, actually, I'll have Ms. Jackson speak to that, but we were thinking two areas we have not to date, but probably our social studies supervisor, Catherine Petco, as well as Gary, would be good folks to have that conversation with.
If you like, yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our social studies department did the standards rollout this summer, and during that time, we had Dr. Vivian Shipe come and speak to them about the importance of the census. We do have curriculum that we are working on, and Ms. Petco, the social studies supervisor, is aware of this program and is working with the teachers to make sure that they have ample resources to make sure that we do our due diligence in teaching about the census this year.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I do also want to mention that I've been working in partnership with the county and city who have joined together to create a Complete Council Committee, which has been working diligently on developing a strategy to outreach from our local leadership for the message of having the 2020 census in our homes. So one of the areas that they're focusing on is education, and we've split that between primary and higher education. So we're working to try and get a group together that can take the lead on this as well.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
If you guys need me, Terry has my contact information. I would love to chat with anyone and everyone about the census. Thank you all.
Appreciate your time. Moving on to Item Number Seven, Special Education Pilot Recruitment Incentive Plan Update. And Mr. Bolton, if you'd take the floor, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, the rest of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of speak to you about some things that we've got going on with this incentive plan. Just to kind of give you an overview, with, when we talk about HR staffing numbers, right now, they're always fluid. So from the time that I could compile a list, till 20 minutes later, it's changed by about four. So I'm going to try to talk about in terms, and you'll notice two different columns there. You'll see the 1920 school year, and that's going to be as of 7/29/19, when I pulled the data. On the right-hand side, you'll look at the 2018-19 school year, and that's going to be cumulative over the year. So a couple of things that you'll see there is the folks that leave, that's going to capture those that have left in the middle of the year and some things like that. So if we start over there on the total number of sped vacancies that we actually have processed to date, we have 144 sped vacancies that we, as of today, that we've had in total. And I kind of took out the largest categories that created those vacancies. We had 14 new positions this year in sped. We had 46 transfers, and when we look at transfers, they kind of, as they move from one position to the other, they, excuse me, they create a vacancy where they go, so, or where they have come from, and so that would also be indicative of that 144 number. We have had 36 resignations, and we, with the early, with the Certified Retirement Incentive, we had 24 retirees this year from our sped department. So if we look at the numbers, all of last year, we ended up with 170 total vacancies in our sped department. That's, of course, cumulative over the entire year. Thirty of those were new positions, and then 44 transfers, and the numbers seem to be about the same. There's really, the retirement incentive was only a difference of about 10 in that particular department. So the, when we're looking at determining how many people have actually will get the signing bonus, I'm not necessarily too comfortable saying that number today, because we go through a process of vetting whether or not those folks are entitled to it. There's certain things that we look at. There's some folks that got the signing bonus two years ago, left in a year, and then came back to us, and they would not be entitled to the signing bonus. So what we have to do, rather than report an overall number of those that accepted those positions, I feel more comfortable maybe coming back to you with that information when it's cleaned, and when we've had a time to vet those. And we typically do that when we're working through the payroll process of paying them. You know, right now, we've vetted about 44, but we've got a whole, a long list to go through to make sure that those qualify. So that's just, those are just a few things that we have. Another thing that I want to point out to you is, if we look at the vacancies to date, when I pulled this report, we had about 24 open positions in special ed, and those were actually created by three new positions, a few, a handful of transfers. But also, in the past week, we've gotten a number of resignations as well. So again, those are fluid numbers. However, I can report that we're pretty comfortable with those numbers, that they're not anything that we're not accustomed to. And I also want to say that we're looking forward to the Retiree Teacher Fair, where we've heard from several sped teachers who are interested in coming in and filling in a part-time capacity. So I think the outlook is good. So to tie that all in to the retirement incentive, I feel uncomfortable saying, you know, as of today, do we want to renew this initiative for next year, because I think the, we don't have enough information to make that. So I would love to come back before you all with the numbers, when we feel comfortable about that and can make a really a good judgment as to whether we need to continue this practice for the next year, or look elsewhere. So that's, that's my report. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Scott? Ms. Fab?
I just have a question about the retirement fair that's coming up. What is the date of that?
That's, it's tomorrow.
How quickly do we feel like we can onboard, since school starts Monday, how quickly do we feel like we can onboard retirees that are trying to get hired back in?
If they're our retirees, the process is expedited. There is a possibility that we could have retirees from surrounding counties, and we invite that, encourage that. But so that will take a little bit of time. However, we do have a game plan in those scenarios to make sure those classrooms are covered, so that we don't have to worry about them not having a teacher.
Scott, one number I'm looking at, and recognizing you're new to human resources, you may not have a full background, but 36 resignations out of a total of 144 positions, that's roughly, what, 30%? Is that, does that hold true to past years, or is that, that seems very high to me. I just, I wondered how that reflected to positions or years past.
I view that as being high, I do. If you look at the past year, last year, we had 47, so it's not up to the level of that, but we, again, those last year numbers are for the full year. And that's something that we want to look at. I will report that the special ed, being a special ed teacher is a very difficult job, and we need to look at some avenues to retain those positions. And so that's, we're currently exploring some of those things to lessen those numbers when we're looking at resignations.
Is there, I understand the exit interviews have started now. Is there any common theme that you're hearing out of these resignations?
Not particularly in special ed, but I think it will require us to take a deep dive and to look and provide some additional support for those teachers.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Seeing no other lights, we'll move on to Item Eight, Revised School Counseling Model of Practice and Student Standards Report. And I'd like Mr. Ryswick to take the floor on that, please. Excuse me, Dr. Rysnick.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Hill. I'm actually going to turn the presentation over to our supervisors of counseling our pre-K five, Ms. Heather Willis, and Lori Driver, our secondary counselor, for them to talk about the differences and the new changes to what our counselors do, quite different from the counselors we're probably used to when we were in school. So turn it over to you, Ms. Willis.
Thank you very much for allowing me an opportunity to speak to you. So Tennessee adopted a new model in April of 2017. They gave us a full year to work on our plans, get everything developed, and it became effective 2018-19 school year. And basically, what they did is they just aligned Tennessee model with the national model. Knox County Schools' mission for our counseling department aligns with the model of Tennessee. And basically, it's to provide every student with a comprehensive school counseling program centered around engaging curriculum that encourages growth in academic, career, and personal social domains. So when you look at a school counselor and their role, 80% of the time, they should be spending with direct student services, and we'll go over that in a little bit more detail in a few seconds. And then 20% is spent on that program management. So program management is just building a foundation, conducting needs assessments, just doing our fair share of the responsibilities within a school. So let's look at the 80%. So the 80% is looking at that school counseling curriculum, going in and taking the standards that the state has given us, and conducting lessons to make sure that all students are taught the counseling standards. Looking at different large group experiences, like a college and career day, or an eighth grade night. So looking at individual student planning, that's going to be more parent conferences, participating in S-teams, and those consultation tops with other professionals. And also crisis, those responsive services, looking at the crisis intervention team, looking at suicide assessments. We also look at consultations, so working with other professionals, like social workers and teachers, especially our administrators, collaborating with other stakeholders, and really being an advocate for the students. Also connecting students with community resources. So we have three tiers. Tier one, all kids. We're looking at the classroom lessons, making sure that we're teaching the standards. Tier two, we base that upon our needs assessment. If we have an elementary school, and we conduct a needs assessment, and we find out here's this big pocket of kids, kids that have anxiety issues, then we're going to create a tier-two small group and teach them in a small group setting about, you know, how to deal with anxiety. And then tier three would be more that individual counseling, that short-term, term, goal-oriented. So if you look at elementary, the state standards, we have 95 standards in elementary. So 33 academic, 39 social-emotional, and 23 college and career. In grade six through eight, we have 57, so 20 of those are academic, 21 social-emotional, and 16 are college and career. And in high school, we have 61 standards, 20 are academic, 21 social-emotional, and 20 are college and career. So the next few slides that you have access to are just the standards. And then the last slide just goes over the benefit of different areas, like what's the benefit for our community, what's the benefit for teachers of having a comprehensive program. But if you look at the standards, if there's a check mark in the box, we do not teach that every year. It's one time during that grade band. So for standard SA1, we teach that one time during K through two, one time three through five, one time six through eight, and one time nine through 12. So the rest of the slides are just a copy of the standards for you to have. Questions?
And this is K through eight, is that correct?
No, the model is K through 12. K through 12.
I was seeing Ms. Driver's name down here also for...
I work with K through five, and Ms. Driver works with secondary.
Oh, all right, all right. Were you also going to... Oh, all right, all right. Were you also going to speak any to the high school standards or high school presentations?
Hi, good evening, Lori Driver. For those of you that don't know me, Heather covered them all. We were just trying to be concise with you all, so.
Okay, great, great. I had both your names down. I didn't want to ignore anyone.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Questions? Comments? Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this is towards Lori. Hey, Lori.
Hi.
How are you? Of course, we're all concerned about emotional issues in the high school and the suicide issue, et cetera, et cetera. Is there, is there something new? Is there some accommodation that we're making now in, you know, in consideration of that? It's, you know, just want to know if there's something going on.
Yes, sir. I think we're excited about Janice Cook working with us now. And we've been meeting, actually, this week and last week, talking about how to approach that. You know, a classroom lesson isn't going to cover what we need to help with kids. And so we're actually talking about revising that suicide assessment and really evaluating that whole program right now about the support we're putting for all kids. I think we all know our country is in crisis with kids and anxiety. And we've been thrilled to have that additional Helen Ross McNabb support that we had last year. And our counselors and our principals all acknowledge what a help that has been to some of our most severe children in crisis. But we are working to be more intentional about identifying those kids that you're talking about. And I think awareness is where we're trying to be. We want to make sure every kid knows their counselor, knows that that's a resource. You know, one of the great stories last year was one of our middle school counselors who's been at this a very long time. Last year was the first year they were intentionally in classrooms delivering lessons. And she made the comment, "It's so nice to know that they don't think I'm the cafeteria lady anymore. They know who I am." And that's a sad reality, that our counselors haven't had access to our kids like they should have. And so this is a pathway. We're not where we need to be yet with that access, but we are moving. I think, you know, I'm sure you know, I also do testing. And so there was a big move to eliminate our counselors being testing coordinators and free, and that's been a ton of time that they've had to dedicate away from kids. And so our principals have been so supportive of removing them from that responsibility so that they are more accessible to kids. We've sadly had situations where they shut down the guidance office for a month while we did testing. And that's not how we need to support kids. So we're real excited. Like Heather said, these are the standards that have been around a long time. We've just formalized them, and we've been really intentional about trying to get access to our kids to talk about these things.
Okay. And the real, kind of the fundamental issue for me is adolescent depression and sort of how to address that early on before it, you know, it gets out of control. So I'm just curious, you know, about what we do and how we do it. Are we doing new things to help us? I have indicators of it, warning signs, so on. That's all. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, because I know some of, especially, I guess, on the elementary side, do not have full-time counselors. And how does that work when there is a crisis or that type of need at a school, and the counselor is not working that day?
We, they can contact me, and if there is a crisis situation, then I can go and assist, or another counselor close by or other support personnel might be in the building.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the middle grades, my understanding is that in health classes, mental health is covered. And so this would be, is that your understanding? And in addition to those, that curriculum, the counselors then would have additional class time with students?
So there's kind of an overlap with those standards, of social-emotional standards. Jean Heiss has worked with Heather when she was working with middle school counselors to see where they were being covered in health classes and where our counselors were doing that. You know, it's hard to have access to kids. And that's that shift we're going through right now, for teachers to give up class time, for counselors to get in there. So we made bold steps last year, and we'll keep getting better at it this year. But like Heather, the little checks show you, we're trying to be intentional. We plotted out in the middle grades, in sixth grade, in the first quarter, we're going to cover these standards, and all kids are going to have access to that. So that's a program we're working on.
Okay. So the counselors would be working with maybe the health teachers to be able to go into those classrooms to make sure that that, okay, thank you.
That's the point.
Lori, you mentioned the Helen Ross McNabb program. And I was made aware that that program may be going away. I know in one of my high schools, they've already notified me that they anticipate that cut may occur.
I'll take that one, if you don't care, Ms. Hill. And Ms. Cook may have some, she's been in that conversation, so she may have some, our director of school culture. But basically, what happened is that some of the idea was that the recoup cost from TenCare reimbursement would be, would help offset the cost for Helen Ross McNabb. And so as the, last year, we got up to 35 of those behavioral therapists that were in our secondary schools assigned for that. I don't think it played out quite like they had hoped that it would. And so there was quite a bit of funding uncovered that they absorbed last year. So Ms. Cook has been in conversation with them about, you know, what is a good number we could work off of for this year. And, you know, again, understanding they have to break even at least as far as that goes. So there looks like there will be a reduction this year. There's still conversation about what that true number will be. And so we're thinking it's probably going to be around 23 as opposed to 35 in the secondary schools. I know, which is, but originally, it was much lower. So if their caseloads build and, you know, the funding is there for that, they have given us their word that they would increase those folks. But I think, again, it wasn't as, didn't work out as well as we had thought that it might initially. So they've been great partners with us, and we want to give it another go this year. And obviously, we want to make sure we have that support level, because as Lori and Heather have said, you know, counselors do that as far as trying to help counsel, but there are still a lot of other duties there, too. So we really have to have kind of a multi-tiered effect to be able to try to reach students and dig down to root causes. And this has been a nice piece for that. Social workers can do some of that, and we can have some other outside counseling. But as we talked in budget cycle, this is a place where, and I was looking at numbers the other day, 28.5 social workers, you know, to serve 88 schools. Like those kinds of numbers, you start seeing that. And with the new increase to a lot of the things that they're speaking to, you know, we're undermanned for that. But, you know, again, it is what it is where we are for now. But so that's kind of, I think, a summary. I don't know, Ms. Cook, is that accurate? Good deal. Thanks.
All right. And perhaps for Ms. Cook, and I know you know this as well as any of us about the transitioning when a student has a therapist and then no longer has one. I have some real ethical concerns about these therapists that were in our schools last year, that many of them had 20 and 30 students that they were doing therapeutic services with, that a therapist, much less not the same one, not being able to return to that school in anticipation of the student returning, which I understand was kind of the transition out and then back in, that these students are left without service. And again, I know that that's, you know, a Helen Ross McNabb program. However, the fact that it was going on in our schools and we were kind of seen as the facilitator for that concerns me about these students losing this support. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think we're very concerned about the number being reduced. And we have had conversations with them when they brought it up, that they were going to cut it down. I think that part of the issue was that some of the, they had made that change before, you know, principals, but while we were still in negotiations. And so some of the therapists went to the schools and, you know, were packing up their stuff. And I think that that caused a bit of a ripple that there was a problem. I think the McNabb ethically, you know, that they look to see who, to try and make this transition as simple and as easy for the students as possible. What I had asked for was that they still have a counselor in every school. You know, it's when we look at this, and they have, some schools do still have a full-time person. So we have kind of worked it out that they will have somebody in every school will have a counselor. So it's the transition, that was McNabb's choice, you know, who, how they transitions the students. The fact that they're not serving them, you know, they might not be serving them in the school, they may be serving them in their, you know, in their actual office. I'm not sure about that. We haven't discussed that. But it's, yes, it is an issue. And it's one that we're, we came out with the best solution that we could to serve the kids the best way we could with what we were being offered for our dollars.
Yeah. And I certainly appreciate that and understand that is not a KCS issue that was created, but just concern for our kids that...
They did, I mean, their plan is that as referrals increase, then they would add more staff. So I will monitor that.
All right. Well, I just would strongly encourage you, as this is happening, if you will do what you can to make sure that McNabb does have a plan for these students when a therapist is not returning for service in their school.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item on the agenda is public forum.
Ma'am, we have no, excuse me, Madam Chair, we have no one signed up for public forum. Thank you.
All right. And we move on to board forum. District one?
No, thank you.
Two?
In Skip Elementary has a ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon at 3:45, so I'd like to invite everyone to come to that.
Thank you. That's exciting. All right. District three? Four? Five?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, we have meet the principal and the administrative team at Fergate High School. So I hope that parents will come to meet the principal tomorrow evening. Welcome back to school.
And District six, myself, welcome back. District seven?
Same thing. Just welcome back all the teachers. And it's been an exciting beginning to the year, and I hope it continues.
District eight? And District nine. All right. Seeing no other lights, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Submit.
Motion by Norman?
Second.
Second by Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.